We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. I wonder if you could all please stand for the Pledge Allegiance in a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Malumbway.
Here.
Alderman Burgess. Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon.
Here.
Alderman Fruin.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here.
Thank you very much. Okay, we do have a quorum. We'll move forward. We have lots of appointments and recognitions today. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and start with National Public Health Week, and I believe Walt, how, Walt, are you here? If you'd come forward, please. And this proclamation proclaiming April 4th to 10th, 2016, to be National Public Health Week, whereas during National Public Health Week, we join to enhance, please come forward. We join to enhance public health here in Bloomington and around the world, and whereas we, where we live matters, it should be safe and have accessible places to walk, exercise, and play, and whereas despite tremendous improvements in health, Americans live shorter lives and suffer worse health outcomes than people in many other high-income countries. The U.S. performs poorly on most measures of health from infant mortality to obesity and chronic disease, whereas it is imperative to ensure that conditions, that everyone, to give everyone the opportunity to be healthy. Social, environmental, and individual factors influence our health as well as the opportunity to make healthy choices, and whereas I encourage all citizens of Bloomington to value public health and its importance in ensuring a thriving community along with ensuring happy and healthy lives for generations to come. Now therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim National Public Health Week to be April 4th to 10th, 2016. Congratulations, Walt.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Awesome. Thank you. Next in our long list is National Library Week. We have Carol Kuss and Terry Lindberg. Are both of you here? I saw Terry at some point. Carol's here? Oh, yeah. Oh, they're sitting together. Great. Please come forward. Proclamation, National Library Week, April 10th to 16th, 2016. Libraries transform. Whereas libraries help transform lives in their communities, campuses, and schools, and whereas librarians work to meet the changing needs of their communities, including providing resources for everyone and bringing services outside of library walls, and whereas libraries and librarians bring together community members to enrich and shape the community and address local issues, and whereas librarians are trained tech-savvy professionals providing technology, training, and accessible to downloadable content like ebooks, and whereas libraries offer programs to meet community needs, providing residents with resume writing, instruction, 24/7 homework help, my students would like to know that, and financial planning to teens applying for student loans, to older adults planning their retirement, and whereas libraries continuously grow and evolve in how they provide for needs of every member of their communities, and whereas librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Terry Renner, Mayor of Bloomington, Illinois, proclaim National Library Week, April 10th to 16th, 2016. I encourage all residents to visit the library this week to take advantage of the wonderful library resources available at your library. Lives can be transformed at your library. Congratulations to both of you. Carol? Thank you. Budding librarian of the future. Okay, the next proclamation is for Equal Pay Day. Is Nikki, come on forward, Nikki. Well, this is a long one. Okay. Proclamation, pardon me?
It is.
It is. Whereas more than 50 years after the passage of the Equal Pay Act, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer consequences of unequal pay, and whereas according to the U.S. Census Bureau, women working full-time year-round in 2014 typically earn 79% of what men earned, indicating little change or progress in pay equity, and whereas according to graduating to a pay gap, a 2012 research report by the American Association of University Women, the gender pay gap is evident one year after college graduation, even after controlling for factors known to affect earnings such as occupation, hours worked, and college major. And whereas in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which gives back to employees their day in court to challenge a pay gap, and now we must pass the Pay Check Fairness Act, which would amend the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness, and whereas according to one estimate, college education women working full-time earn more than a half million dollars less than their male peers do over the course of a lifetime, whereas four in 10 mothers are primary breadwinners in their household, and nearly two-thirds are primary or significant earners, making pay equity critical to families' economic security, and whereas a lifetime of lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement, less income counted in social security or pension benefit formulas, and whereas the American Association of University Women, state roadmaps ranks Illinois 25th among states with the median annual earnings ratio for women at 79%, whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardships in both public and private sectors, and whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy, and as whereas Tuesday, April 12th, symbolizes the time in 2016 when the wages are paid to American women to catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 12th, 2016 to be Equal Pay Day. Thank you. Again, we do have a record number. I don't think I've had this many proclamations since I've been mayor. We have next Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I, actually, I believe people from the Child Protection Network are not here, so I'll just read this in abstention. I'm screwed. Oh, there is? Oh, I'm sorry. Terry, oh, that's right, Terry, you're on the board. I said, it says to be mailed. I'm sorry, I'm just following my instructions, Terry. Thank you. You're back up. In recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2016, whereas the City of Bloomington believes that future prosperity depends on our youth, and whereas the city believes that nurturing relationships and stable environments improve the well-being of children, and whereas the City of Bloomington believes that the community should be a safe and comfortable place for parents, children, caregivers, families, and all others, and whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement of people across the community to bring about solutions, and whereas the month of April has been designated as Child Abuse Protection Month, Prevention Month, excuse me, and the Child Protection Network is providing much-needed services and solutions throughout McLean, Livingston, and Duitt Counties, now I therefore, Terry Renner, Mayor of Bloomington, hereby proclaim the month of April 2016 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Bloomington, Illinois. I urge all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, education institutions, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support children, parents, caregivers, families, and all others, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening our community. Thank you, Terry. And the next is Autism Awareness Month, and I believe, we have Carrie Sandras and Please come forward. Good to see you. Declaring April 2016 to be Autism Awareness Month, whereas in the United States, autism is the second-leading childhood development disorder, as many as 1.5 million Americans today are believed to have some form of autism. It is a complex neurodevelopmental disorder that is present throughout the lifespan, and whereas autism was first identified in 1943 by Dr. Leo Cantor of Johns Hopkins Hospital. Based on statistics from the U.S. Department of Education and other governmental agencies, autism is growing at a rate of 10 to 17% per year, and now considered the fastest-growing developmental disorder in the United States. And whereas about 1 in 45 individuals are diagnosed with autism, making it more common than pediatric cancer, diabetes, and AIDS combined, it occurs in all racial, ethnic, and social groups, and is four times more likely to strike boys than girls, and whereas an increase in community awareness is necessary in understanding autism. Now therefore, I, Terry Renner, proclaim April 2016 as Autism Awareness Month. I encourage all residents of Bloomington to recognize Autism Awareness Month, and you had a great start last week. Congratulations on that. Pardon me? If you could do that at public comment, are we okay to do that at this time?
Public.
They would like to just make a few comments?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
Just wanted to say that we launched, Autism McLean and Mark First launched a new campaign to be an autism-friendly community, and we have little decals, we have a website, which is autismfriendly.community, where we're inviting local businesses and organizations to go online and tell us what you're doing that is autism-friendly, and we'd like to celebrate that and spread the word and use that as a model for others. So, thank you for your participation. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Dan Terry. Congratulations. Thank you. Next, we have Monarch Pledge Month, and we have Angelo Caparella. Please come forward. Proclamation declaring April to be Monarch Pledge Month, whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans, and whereas 20 years ago, more than 1 billion eastern monarch butterflies migrated to Mexico, but in the winter of 2014, only 60 million made the trip, and whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly, and whereas every citizen of Bloomington can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship, and whereas on behalf of the people of Bloomington who have already helped to create a healthy habitat for these magnificent butterflies, I'm honored to sign the Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge, and I encourage other city officials across our great nation to take a stand with me so that the monarch butterfly will once again flourish across the continent. Therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim April to be Monarch Pledge Month in the City of Bloomington. Congratulations. And we have another proclamation, National Safe Digging Month, and I believe former Alderman Bernie Anderson is here? Hey, Bernie, come on forward. No stranger to this lectern.
Yeah.
Anyway, whereas the City of Bloomington will observe the 9th Annual National Digging, Safe Digging Month in April and help spread the word about the importance of calling Julie at 9 or 811 before any digging projects, and whereas Julie works with damage prevention and safety partners across the state of Illinois to protect citizens, and whereas the main goal is to reduce the risk of striking underground utility lines and potentially causing environmental or property damage, personal injury, and inconvenient outages, and whereas according to the Common Ground Alliance, every six minutes an underground utility line is damaged because someone decided to dig without first calling a one-call notification center, just such as Julie across the nation. I, there, Terry Renner, Mayor of the City of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim April 2016 as National Safe Digging Month in the City of Bloomington, and encourage all citizens to call Julie before you dig. Thank you.
I feel a special concern, but I'd have to have a comment too, but if you don't call and an incident does occur, I'm the individual that also gets called, so 36 years since some really bad stuff happened, so even homeowners, as you as residents, please call before you dig. Thank you.
Thanks. And let's see, we have, this is, last but not least, it's, am I, oh, this is a certificate, I'm sorry, it's a commissioned certificate, Officer Jacob Law. Officer, are you here? And chief? Come on, guys. Don't be shy. Come on. Yeah, please, come on forward.
And citizens, tonight we have Officer Jacob Law here for his commission presentation. Tonight here with him is his wife Kylie, his mother Joanna Henriksen, father Danny Law, stepmother Law Stephanie Law. Prior to joining our department, Jacob worked for Caterpillar and also as a training instructor with the U.S. Army in Afghanistan. He graduated from Eureka High School and earned his bachelor's degree from Illinois State University with a double major in engineering, technology, and renewable energy. He enjoys spending time off with his family and friends. I will tell you, he didn't give us much to work with, because that's the type of person he is, and he didn't want me to embarrass him up here, but I'm the chief, so I could talk about him a little bit. No, I will just tell you, he was well thought of, thought of, done a background from Caterpillar, accolade from the military, has done a fine job since he's been with our department, and we look for more things from him. I had the pleasure of working with his father with the state police, so I know where he comes from, so, Jacob Law.
Come forward. I also have to. Standing ovation. You may not get these very often. The City of Bloomington Police Department, police officers commissioned by authority of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners of the City of Bloomington and the County of McLean and the State of Illinois, we hereby certify that Jacob D. Law, having been duly sworn, was appointed and commissioned as a police officer on the 22nd day of September 2014. As evidence thereof, we set our hand and seal, Terry Renner, Mayor of Bloomington. Thank you. Congratulations. Now, now we're going to, and I believe that this is accurate, Madam Clerk, this list here, so then I, we have, is it David?
Beji.
Beji? David, are you here? Just to be standing and recognized, for the John Scott Healthcare Commission, and then the appointment of Mark Williams to the Property Maintenance Review Board. Mark, are you here? Okay. All right. We'll move right along then to public comment, and we have quite a few people in public comment. You have up to three minutes, and just so that the audience knows, we don't respond to public comment. If you want to have responses or answers in real time, I have a mayor's open house every 4:30 to 5:30 before a Monday council meeting. We sit right around that table as we did last Friday, and you can often get answers in real time, problems solved in real time, and if you wanted to engage in a dialogue with us and discussion, that's absolutely the time to do it. So at this point, we're gonna go ahead and start, and I'll read these off in threes, so if you'll be prepared. Judy Sterns, Bruce Meeks, and Shelley Wellenider? I apologize if I've, mispronounced your name. Judy Sterns, Bruce Meeks, and Shelley Wellenider.
Thank you. I want to address the budget tonight. I was not able to attend the budget session, the open session on that. My understanding is it's going up by $20 million, the budget, and I think you have all probably been congratulated on the fact that it's balanced, and I believe that means that it's going to be paid. You're gonna find the revenue, and you have found the revenue, and that will balance it. Unfortunately, it's been balanced on the backs of least among us, the poorest, the people that are not in this room tonight, they're not going to be here, they're too busy, struggling, working, desperately trying to keep up. We know that we now have somewhat of a service economy here in Bloomington, and it's just a fact, that's where our jobs are coming from. These are minimum wage jobs. People actually, people out there actually bring home $300 and $400, they actually do, $300 and $400 a week, and every, the gas tax, utility tax, the sales tax, and now you even have a sort of a rental tax, you've increased rental fees, what, 200, 300, in some cases, percent? Believe me, it's going to be felt, and it is being felt. I talk to people every day that literally cannot afford an apartment in the City of Bloomington. I mean, what do you, what do you want to do with them? I don't know, but that's how you've balanced the budget, and $20 million is an unconscionable sum. I mean, it's so high that why bother even thinking about cuts at this point? We talked about them, most of you weren't here, so you probably don't know. We talked about prioritizing, we talked about cuts for every single year of the eight years that I spent in your, in your, on your board here, and guess what? This is, this is, now we're prioritizing. I was scolded thoroughly for the cuts that I came up with, even if it was $4 or $5 million, and some of them have actually been implemented, some of those ideas, I'm happy to say, but $20 million is a, is a sum that is hard to imagine, and yet you won't hear a word of protest, I'm sure, not from the local press, who will congratulate you in fact on this wonderful thing, and the people who are gonna pay for it aren't here tonight. They can't, they're, they're not heard, they're not a part of the conversation. You have become the power elite, and that's exactly what you are, that's who you defend, that's what you vote for, and that's why there's not a hope that anyone here, except for Alderman Lauer, will courageously say enough is finally enough. Courage isn't voting with the majority, trust me on that, it's being in the minority, and he will pay for that, he will suffer for that. Anyone who dares to question the status quo will suffer, but I congratulate him, and I congratulate anyone who has the, you know, whatever, the courage, I guess, to support and to speak for those who can't speak, who aren't here. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Meeks, Shelley, and then Mark Johnson.
Hello, Council, long time no see. Oh, wait a minute, I've been watching on live streaming. On the Autism Awareness Month, I want to compliment the Bloomington Police Department. There's been a number of occasions that I know different children of autism have been stopped, and luckily, we have some things in place with our police department. They understood the situation and handled it very well, and that's been going on for at least four years, I know of, and I want to compliment the fact that we have that in place with our Bloomington Police Department. The budget, I still say that inter-fund transfers should come to this council for approval, not just once a year, but as needed. The way that Patty has done this, I compliment the changes that are in progress, but I still think inter-fund transfers need to come to the council to be approved, which you are doing tonight on some of them. We still have a structural deficit, correct? We've balanced the budget for about two years maybe, but we still have a deep debt coming. So you've balanced the budget, but you have not resolved the financial situation. Mr. Hales has made this very clear, very quietly on a few occasions, but very clear for at least eight years, and you still, as a council, need to come together and put everything back on the table like we were promised this last year, which didn't occur, because if it had occurred, you would have known about the $6,000 armored car service for the golf courses. All we have to do is bond our people, and we don't need armored car service. There's a lot of other departments using armored car services, $6,000. We still have the money that we spend on noon lunches for mainly Democratic Party members that attend them. Yes, I'm a little tired of both the Democrats and Republicans running our nonpartisan council. It's happened for decades, it needs to come to a halt. I really think there'd be some citizens coming forward to run in some of these wards and maybe even for mayor. August 2014, anybody remember what I did that day, that month? Anybody have to remember? I gave you a transparency ordinance, the next step after the website transparency, which I gave before Mayor Renner was given the oath of office. I've heard nothing back from the city manager. I did the legal requirements, I gave you 11 copies here at the council, I came to the council on three different occasions requesting that I be allowed to come give a presentation, and you won't allow it. So no, you do not want transparency, you do not want the data that citizens own, own, available to them. That's unfortunate. Thank you.
Shelley Wellenider? Again, I apologize if I've mispronounced your name. Mark Johnson, and then Michael Gorman. Please come forward. Good evening.
I'm here to help. I feel like the community needs more people to help.
Okay, and Nicole?
You have to address the council about the Connect Transit by two towers.
Okay. Okay. You can help her, help her explain what that is? Yes, ma'am?
I don't, I, I really, I want my best.
The bus stop, right. Yeah, I can understand.
I'm here for help, I'm here for help.
She can't get home.
Right.
I'm here because I, I'm worried because I can't walk home.
Okay.
Can't walk home.
Okay. And actually, we don't usually do interactions, but I tell you what, if you could get the contact information, and I will call Andrew Johnson from Connect Transit tomorrow and ask about that.
They have solved that issue.
They have solved that issue?
That's all, yes.
They have solved that issue?
They're not moving it.
They're not moving it? Okay. Well, that was easier then. Thank, I'm sorry that that, that happened.
The return trip is what she's trying to say.
Oh, the return trip. Okay.
The property manager there.
Andrew, are you in the back?
He was.
Oh, he was. He is, I see Andrew. Okay. So we can, we'll, let's work on that, ma'am. Okay? Thank you.
I don't know how to help my wife, I don't know how to help. I can't, I can't, I can't help.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Thanks. Mark Johnson, Michael Gorman, and Patricia Martin.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Council. How is everyone? My name's Mark Johnson. I think I appeared here a while back. I'm an Uber driver and was wanting to encourage the council to make sure that they know as much about Uber before they pass any regulations regarding Uber. I'm not going to ask for a show of hands, but I know besides the mayor, who's a world traveler, probably has used Uber frequently. But if you haven't used Uber, I would encourage you to use Uber so that you can understand the technology behind it, so that you can understand exactly the safety features that are a part of the app itself. There is a gentleman here from Uber Chicago that will be addressing you, so I won't take up much time on items that he will cover. But I did want to at least point out a couple of items that, since I've visited with you last, and also done another thousand trips with Uber in Bloomington Normal, so now I'm up about 2,025 trips in Bloomington Normal doing Uber. Something that needs to be addressed by the council if anything in the future is related to safety and related to Uber. There's an issue related to me seeing designated drivers unloading and allowing anywhere between eight to 12 kids out of a caravan in downtown Bloomington, where we have designated drivers that are college students in their 20s, being paid a dollar a person to then put well over the legal limit of people in a vehicle, take them downtown and drop them off. And if I'm noticing that, then I would hope that others would notice that, because that seems to be quite a safety issue related to people who are driving around town and, and what can happen from that. Those people are driving illegally, especially if they're taking money from other college students. Their personal insurance will be voided if it is found out that they are a designated driver and taking money for that. That seems to be an issue that needs to be addressed in conjunction with all of anything else related to how people are being transported in Bloomington Normal and getting them home safely. Uber does that. I have 2,025 rides to show for that. And so, please, learn more about Uber. Learn how the technology works. Learn how people are safe and protected when they're using Uber. Don't buy into the headlines that a lot of people throw at me when I do Uber them. I get to tell them and educate them frequently. I'm available to any council member if you'd like to speak with me more. The second thing that needs to be addressed, and I hope I spoke with council earlier this afternoon, is that there needs to be a designated pickup and drop-off point for Uber and cab drivers to stem the flow and confusion related to us doing our job down there, cab drivers and Uber drivers. Thank you for your time and attention, and I look forward to working with you guys to make sure that we can have a successful transportation in downtown Bloomington.
Great, thank you. Michael Gorman, Patricia Martin, and then Sarah Moore.
Good evening. My name's Michael Gorman, and I co-chair Bike Blono's Public Policy and Infrastructure Committee. Good everyone who's here to, with me to support the Main Street Tiger application. Raise your helmets or your hands if you don't have a helmet with you. So it's pretty amazing to me that all it took to get this many people to come out tonight was one Facebook post on Saturday morning. What this says to me is that this community has a strong, widespread desire for a safer, more livable Main Street. You may not know this, but Bike Blono formed in 2012 in response to the MCRPC's Main Street Transportation Improvement Feasibility Study. A few of us found each other talking about it on Twitter, and our first time ever meeting in person was to show our support for bike lanes on Main Street at a city council open house. This project has always been a priority for us, and now is our chance to seize the opportunity. We want this to happen, and if Tiger won't fund it, we'll keep looking for ways to get it done. So why is this project important? It's not just for those of us who ride bikes to get around. Bike lanes make streets safer for everyone. What we have now is an urban highway that separates two colleges from off-campus student housing. If you haven't seen the game of Human Frogger that goes on every day at ISU in Wesleyan, you haven't spent much time on Main Street. It's pretty frightening. Putting in bike lanes will make people in cars more aware of their surroundings, which will prevent deaths and injuries along the entire corridor. Another thing we've all seen is people riding bikes on the sidewalk against the flow of traffic. Bike Blono is working on public education campaigns to prevent that kind of dangerous activity. But education can only go so far. People are going to do what they think is safest, and the fact that riding on the sidewalk is significantly less safe than riding on the street is counterintuitive. Adding bike lanes will give people a dedicated space, safe space to ride. Main Street in particular is an important corridor for bike commuters. Only a small percentage of people who ride bikes show up to advocate for them. The vast majority are people who simply can't afford a car. And in our community, many of those people live on the West Side. We completely lack safe, well-connected north-south bike routes in that part of the community. This project is one opportunity to help address that problem. I have here a letter Bike Blono has provided to IDOT in support of this application, which I'll hand out for your reference. Thank you for your time tonight, and from all of us here, thank you for supporting this project. It really means a lot.
Thank you, Michael. Patricia Martin, Sarah Moore, and then Marco McContry.
Thank you. I continue to visit meetings on mental health issues in our area, more recently one at the Health Department last week, discussing a future forum in May based on crisis intervention and suicide prevention. I'm impressed by the concern shown by the men and women at these meetings. For mental health issues, as we all know, affect not only the general public, but those who run and organize the institutions that they frequent. As Tom Barr, Director of the Center for Human Services, has said, such issues include all age groups and income levels. The flyer that I showed all of you last week, Mental Health First Aid, indicates that help can be available in our community through free classes that show how to identify the burgeoning of difficult situations before they become explosive ones. And I've taken the liberty of sending copies of these flyers to you and also to the public library. For public libraries can be potentially troublesome and even dangerous because of their eclectic populations. A major reason why the hiring, hiring of library personnel, as well as the supervision of library personnel, is so critically important, and that's actually what we're in the process of doing right now. However, libraries can also be repositories for help, serving as sites, for example, for posters and flyers, which can show in a powerful way through visuals and text, not only the negative, but the positive. And I want to thank the staff of our library for their help in making this possible, too. I found some informative flyers at Heartland regarding abusive situations that can apply to all ages. "You can look for warning signs," one heading says. "If it feels wrong to you, it probably is." And a lawyer told, made that comment to me some time ago. Also, "Don't mind your own business. Let the individuals know what's happening isn't right. Don't want to get in the action? Get on your cellphone and call for help," and so on. For many other organizations are concerned about similar situations. The Family Violence Coordinating Councils also provide forums offering help for victims and perpetrators, young and old. And this month, on the 15th, Peoria will sponsor Hands Around the Courthouse to show community awareness regarding child abuse. Here in Bloomington and Normal, we have blue pinwheel displays near Uptown Station, Illinois Wesleyan, and our county courthouse, whirling in the wind in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month. And the should and does include the elderly, too. The Peoria family councils also have a committee devoted to elder victims. And June 15th is World Elder Awareness Day. There are meetings scheduled across the country, including Washington, D.C., and fact sheets and banners are going to be handed out. So what are we going to do here? What about fireworks in the Courthouse Square instead of pinwheels? After all, those fireworks die out after their program ends. They still show that they are capable of making a brilliant display. And finally, from John Colleton's office in Springfield, Senate Bill 2059, Senate floor amendment number two, authorizing money for human services, mental health, and public libraries, among others, has been passed and will go to the House for consideration. It is currently in the executive committee.
I may need you to wrap up. Patricia, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Moore, and then Marco McContry, and then last but not least, Dominic Barazza.
Hi. My name is Sarah Moore, and I'm a resident of Bloomington on North Hershey Road. I'm here tonight to discuss the safety and the speed on our road. That is pictures of a drunk driver that was doing, the police estimated between 45 and 50 miles an hour when he slammed into our tree last Saturday morning at about quarter till seven. We had Officer, well Sergeant Albee was in our driveway this evening, and he was also taking radar. Within 30 minutes, he got three people, one doing 47, 49, and 51. And Hershey Road is 30 miles an hour. My family has lived on this road for 30-plus years, and they've taken away our parking. They only give us parking on weekends now. It used to be weekends and holidays. They need to, sorry, I'm a little nervous. They need to basically, instead of a speed trailer that's in front of us, they need to be there clocking. They need to be speed traps. There needs to be some sort of a traffic calming that needs to be done there because it's unsafe. There are families there. If you saw on my, my poster, my child was 10 feet away from this accident that slammed into my tree. We need to turn Hershey back into a neighborhood. The lights that has been suggested to be put on Clearwater and also on Arrowhead, it's not going to solve anything. It's going to create more people that are just going to be speeding through the yellow light just to make it. It's creating more accidents in that regard. There should possibly be a camera, like they do on the interstate, that says, hey, you know, I'm going to take a picture of your license and send you a ticket. Because at this point, people are, people aren't even, regarding the fact that there's a speed trailer in front of my house, it seems like they're trying to go as fast as they possibly can to, I don't know, beat the speed limit. I'm willing to even start a GoFundMe if the city doesn't afford, can't afford the camera, to possibly set up a camera so that they can take the pictures. And if there's also a possibility that we could lower the speed limit, I know that that sounds silly, but there, over on Rainbow, there's speed humps. I don't know if that's a possibility, but something needs to be gone because it's completely unsafe at this point. I mean, there's children, family, residents. That accident, my neighbor that lives over here, she had two little girls in her basement. My tree would have been in there, they would have slammed into her home. I mean, it's, it's to the point where it's completely ridiculous that people, the gentleman, Officer Albee, this evening caught a pizza delivery man that was doing 51 miles an hour in a 30 mile an hour zone. So, I mean, I guess that's about all I have to say. Signs about speeding and fines, maybe raise the speed limit fine, but that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate you calling attention to this. Marco McContry, and then Dominic Barazza.
Members of the council, thank you for allowing me to address you today. My name is Marco McContry, and I'm the general manager for Uber in Illinois. I'm here today to ask the council not to adopt the proposed changes to TNC rules requiring trade dress for transportation network companies. Transportation network companies provide software that matches people looking for a ride with partners on our platform through a touch of a button on the smartphone. The city adopted smart, smart ride-sharing regulations without this requirement, like so many dozens of cities and states, including the state of Illinois, that recognize the part-time flexible nature of the work of drivers on the platform. These requirements are, the current rules that you have in place promote safety. They require a background check of all drivers, $1 million insurance, $1 million insurance policy, and a vehicle inspection requirement. But it's important to note that TNC drivers are not licensed chauffeurs, and their vehicles are private vehicles under state law. As proposed, the requirement would be problematic for Uber and its driver partners for a multitude of reasons. One, an exterior, an exterior trade dress requirement would be the only of its kind, and we are not set up at this time to meet such a requirement. And this, this type of unique requirement would threaten our, would threaten and be very difficult for operations. Secondly, the more, the majority of our drivers spend under 10 hours a week on the platform. In markets where we've seen additional barriers and compliance costs, we've seen partners discouraged from taking that first trip or continuing to drive on the platform. And in smaller, newer markets such as Bloomington, we're fearful that the trade dress requirements can have a disproportionate negative impact on TNC growth and increased wait times. Thirdly, trade dress can confuse riders, and it works against many of our safety measures. The only way to ensure the proper driver is through the mobile application. So when you request a ride in the Uber app, you see the driver's picture, their name, their license plate number, and the make and the model of their vehicle. So trade dress, it can be replicated, and it opens the door for fraudulent activity. We want riders defaulting to the app's safety features and not necessarily just looking for you on windshield. In addition to these problems, trade dress doesn't solve the objectives that we've understood here in terms of the intent of the proposed ordinance. Trade dress does not help you recognize Uber driver partners. It's not the most effective way. The digital decal in the app is the best way to achieve this. We've worked with enforcement officials to provide demos on how to, on how to pull drivers' insurance info, their name, their trip history, and their, their digital decal information within the app, and we'd be happy to work with enforcement officials within this town. We feel a collaborative approach is the best way to meet our collective goals, to reduce congestion and ensure the safe and seamless transportation of the citizens here in Bloomington. We want to work with the city to discuss pickup and drop-off points, a communication plan for our drivers and partner, for our driver partners, and how we can, ways that we can customize our tech to help the city meet its goals.
I'm going to need you to finish.
We're here to partner to help create economic opportunity and provide safe, reliable transportation options. We ask that the city preserve its current ordinance that's helping promote the growth of TNC services here in Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Dominic Barazza.
Good evening.
Good evening, Dominic.
I just want to say that I live on Hershey as well, and it is mayhem when State Farm gets out, but not only when State Farm gets out, but during the daytime as well. It's kind of nerve-wracking to feel that our houses are a target, especially if we have families and our friends, neighbors have kids. We're going out to our car. We don't want a drunk driver or someone speeding, flying and hitting our mailbox, and maybe that mailbox flies and hits the car. Sometimes we, we feel unsafe in our homes because of the fact that we have people speeding down our drive, our, our street, and the possibility of them flying through our house, such as that tree being a blockade. And to have to keep our eye on our rearview mirror when we're pulling into our driveways, it's nerve-wracking because I have watched my, my neighbor got rear-ended because the person was on their phone, and she was going excessively fast. And it's kind of nerve-wracking to see my parents and myself and my neighbors pulling our driveway because you see people flying past us, and especially with the people that are doing yard care or renovations of houses down the street. They don't pay attention to them in their, in their driveway or as they're backing out. So we've got to the point where we're backing in our driveway so we can get out safely. Not only this isn't the first incident of a drunk driver, we also have one on New Year's Eve. He just drove through all three of our yards and didn't stop, but they caught him further down. I think something needs to be done. I think all of us on Hershey think something needs to be done, especially on the bend where we live. It is downhill, and I understand that sometimes the speed limit gets sketchy going down the bend on the downhill, but common sense says if you're going downhill, speed limit says 35, it's residential, residential area, we should all be going 35. And I've caught myself going over 35, but I corrected and hit the brakes to make sure there's no kid coming out on his bike or the family that's walking their dog with their kid. I think that it should be closely watched because we, we want to feel safe in our homes, and we want to be able to not have to worry about an incident happening, such as the other week with the car hitting the tree. But other than that, I think speed, speed signs need to be put up more often, and police, our driveway is open 24 hours. My mom offered the officers to sit in our driveway 24 hours a day just to make sure we're safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the council would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to request that item number J be pulled and tabled to a, to an undetermined time in the future, if you and the council could so consider.
Okay, so that's the consideration of the amendment that essentially taxicabs and transportation network company vehicles, so that we would table that and reconsider that at a future time?
Yes.
Can a member of the council? Would you ask that people?
I'd be curious to know why.
Before we vote, I'd like...
I'll be happy to make that motion.
Or just a request, right? And, yeah, we have a question then of why?
Yeah, basically, it's to allow us a little bit more time. There is a requirement in this ordinance that would require decals, identification, and we want to do a little more research to see if truly is there some other... we want to do a little more research to see if truly is there some other examples out there in the nation that, and do some verification of that. I think, is there other items? Either one of our attorneys?
Just a dialogue about some of the alternatives out there and make sure we come up with the best for public safety and the various interests involved.
Okay. All right. And is there any other item that anyone would like to move, so that essentially what I will do is ask for a motion for, to approve the consent agenda, except for J and any other items that someone would want to, anyone else want to remove?
I'll second it.
Okay, so, well, actually, I, I think we had a member, Member Lauer agree to pull it, so now I need a motion. Is that a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, except for J?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second.
Second, several seconds, second by Alderman Schmidt then. And then Alderman Fruen?
Thank you. With regard to the consent and regular agenda, I have not received any monies or financial benefits from any of the individuals or organizations referenced in each of these specific agenda items. When I do vote here and push the button, I will be voting no on L, but I'll be voting yes for everything except L. You want me to pull that? Would you rather?
I think you need to pull that. Yes.
So much for the good old days when we could do this.
Yeah.
All right, I'll pull L then.
Okay. So if I could ask the maker and seconder of the motion, would that be okay for you to include accepting J and L? Your maker and the seconder of the motion is fine with that. So the motion will be to pass everything on the consent agenda except J and L. All right? And if we go ahead and vote now? The motion carries eight to zero. Again, Alderman Burgess is not here. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you. Now we go ahead and, we need a, do we need a separate motion to postpone this? Do we need a separate motion for us to postpone item J? Is there a motion to postpone this?
I'll make that motion, sir.
Okay, moved by Alderman Lowers or second?
I'll second.
And then not to a date certain, second by Alderman Schmidt. Let's go ahead and vote on that, if you will. That motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay. And we move now to item L. Alderman Fruen, you wanted to pull item L?
I intend to vote no on that, so probably the best motion would be in support of it by somebody else.
Okay.
I will make a motion that we pass item seven L as presented to us.
Okay, moved by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. Any discussion? Okay, then let's go ahead and vote. This is on item L. Okay, the motion carries six to two. There are two nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Lauer and Alderman Fruen.
Okay, thank you. All right, we move right along now to our regular agenda. The first is item eight A, consideration of payment for property liability excess, excuse, excess liability and excess workers' compensation insurance coverage. And we have a brief presentation, I believe, by our Assistant City Manager, Mr. Rasmussen, and Mike Nugent.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. First of all, I'd like to thank all of the department heads who, over a course of about two or three months, helped us get all the data together for twenty-seven different sets of policy data, which ensures that we have our information up to date and are properly insured. Today, to help us bring forward this recommendation on our insurance, I wanted to introduce Mike Nugent, our risk manager from Nugent Consultant, who will have a couple of slides to show with you. Mike?
Thank you. Good evening. Twenty sixteen represents the conclusion of a three-year award we gave to the insurers and the broker for our current insurance program. In preparation for that, we issued an RFQ to insurance agents, and unfortunately, and oddly, this is the only time this has ever happened, we got no response. So we couldn't get any agents or brokers interested. I think there's several reasons for that. Partly, we have, on an annual basis, beat this pricing down to a figure that is probably scaring everyone else away. That's Gallagher's argument, our broker's argument, and I think there's some validity to that. So we did direct Gallagher to get some alternative proposals from insurers if, if they could. And again, our structure here is a little bit unique. The structure is designed to have the, the city pay its own losses up to a point, and then we reinsure it. It's a, it's not a common structure for businesses, but it is a fairly common structure for municipalities the size of Bloomington. And there's just not that many insurers, unfortunately, that will do it. So the result is about a seven percent increase. The initial quotes were at eight point three percent. The drivers of those cost increases are primarily city issues, not insurer issues. As Steve mentioned, through the data collection process this year, I think we zeroed in on much more accurate property values, and through that process, the insured property values went up almost fifteen percent. In the negotiations, we try and find soft spots and got a lot of pushback from the insurer based on the city's own losses. Some of those you're aware of, from Betty McLean, who has been in front of you in executive session to discuss those. And those, those create issues, not so much in terms of the initial pricing, but when we're trying to negotiate, that's where we get pushback, is the insurer saying, hey, we've got claims. So all in all, I think we have a very good renewal, even though seven percent probably doesn't sound like it. But given the changes and exposures and the city's own loss experience, I'm generally pleased with the outcome.
All right. Any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point then, we have consideration of this. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman. How many? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. Any further discussion? Okay. Then a vote on this is obviously ayes to approve, this as presented and moved. The motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. Moving right along, we move to eight B, consideration of approving a first amendment to the contract for professional services at the U.S. Cellular Coliseum. And we have a very brief presentation by our city manager and Mr. Juergens, and then ten minutes budgeted for council discussion.
Mayor, just want to make a few brief comments. This particular amendment would not be coming forward to you without a lot of hard work by many, many individuals, especially city employees. Not only is Jeff Juergens, Corporate Counsel, Leslie Yocum, a contract employee, Patty Lynn Silver, Finance Director, and many others have been very involved for months, not only in negotiations with the Central Illinois Arena Management, but also as we've tried to ascertain what would be a good value, an appropriate value, a defendable value for concession equipment if the same were purchased by either the city of Bloomington or Venue Works. So tonight, Jeff Juergens is going to go over just a few quick highlights, but we also want to acknowledge appreciation to Venue Works, who has extended a no-interest loan that will provide for the initial financing to purchase the concession equipment, and then they will be repaid over the next five years through actual operating revenue generated from the Coliseum, more than likely food and beverage.
So that's neutral to the general fund?
Very much so. It's neutral in the sense that, yes, ultimately, the city will take ownership of this concession equipment, and the payment by the city will come out of a reduction in concession or other operating revenue at the Coliseum. With that, turn the time over to Jeff Juergens, Corporate Counsel.
Just the only other thing I would add to that is the agreement also sets up a process for, that would allow Venue Works to accept assignment of sponsorship agreements and other agreements that have been entered into that extend beyond the term of, of the previous management agreement. We would also provide, because we want them to be out there aggressively marketing the Coliseum, that we would begin the process of paying them the five percent, five percent commission on sponsorship agreements. However, we have some exclusions. If it's something that, you know, we assign for, or they got paid a commission on, they would not get that commission. It would be prorated if we don't extend the agreement with Venue Works. And also for any sponsorship agreements that they take it as an assignment, then they would not get a commission on it. So that's the other portion of the submitted contract. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions of Mr. Juergens.
Yes. Jeff, first, will this legally force the city of Bloomington into additional capital investment in the short term?
No, this, all this, all this agreement's going to do is basically provide that we will be responsible at this no-interest loan for repaying for this capital equipment.
Okay, I understand that, but say something doesn't work out, one of the pieces of equipment is unable to be continued to serve its purpose, are we forced then to replace that by this contract?
No, there's nothing in here that obligates that, and in fact, what Venue Works will do is they're going to put together a long-term capital improvement program. So there's nothing in here that if a major piece of equipment breaks down or something that we've got to replace that, that'd be something that they would come back to us, make a recommendation, and then this council will decide whether or not to spend the money on that or not.
Right. And further, with the new sponsorships, we're predetermining that we're going to go ahead and sign a longer-term agreement. And so from a legal standpoint, I'm not sure I'm completely comfortable with that.
Well, we're, we're actually providing in here that if we, we're, we're considering the possibility that we don't enter into that long-term agreement. And then here it says, if we do not, then the city will take those assignments. More than likely, what would happen is the city would give those assignments to some other management company that was going to come in here. In addition, what we say is if the, if we don't enter into an extended five-year agreement with Venue Works, that any commission that they would earn would be prorated to only the time they were there. So this is not guaranteeing them any longer-term contract, and it actually contemplates the idea that we might not enter into that five-year agreement.
All right, I read all that. So you're, you're telling me that even beyond anything that we've just discussed here, that there would be no predetermined legal aspects to this that neither of us could foresee that would force us into?
That's correct. We, we tried to set this up so that, that we make sure we have ultimate flexibility. If we can't come to terms with Venue Works, we don't foresee that happening, but if it does happen, we wanted to make sure the city was protected and not locked into anything.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay. Any further questions? Did we have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve this as presented to us.
Moved by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Painter. And again, an aye is in favor, nay would be opposed, of course. The motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thanks. And, see, Mr. Karch is already coming forward, and we have under item C, consideration of a resolution waiving the formal bidding process and authorizing an agreement with Henson Disposal of Bloomington. And we have a, a brief presentation, and then I will ask for a motion.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Your Honor. And I wanted to explain the details of this because it gets just a little bit tricky here. And what we're doing is, we're recommending that we give this contract to Henson for the disposal of our solid waste. And what will happen is all of this bulky waste that's picked up, instead of taking it directly to the landfill, what we will do is we'll take it to Henson Disposal. Now, the advantage to that is he charges just a tiny bit less, about seventy-five cents a ton or a small amount. But then what they will do is they will extract from this all of the recyclable construction and demolition material. They recycle that, and then the rest of it, they take to the, to the landfill. So we actually pay a little bit less, and they then take the recyclable material out of it. And the reason we're asking that we approve a resolution waiving the formal bidding process is because they're the only people that do this. And so we end up getting our bulky waste disposed of. It costs us a little bit less, and we help in terms of the landfill. What's happened is a, a number of council members have asked us, so what we're doing about the landfill, which is quickly filling up, and we're doing everything we can, and this is one of the things that will help us because everything that is recyclable will be taken out of there by Hanson instead of going to the landfill.
Questions?
He beat me to the punch.
And Steve, I, I probably should have asked this ahead of time, so I apologize. When we say that, that Henson is the only one that does that, is, do we know that because we have done an, an RFQ or some type of a request to determine that, or is that just simply kind of, you know, on-the-street knowledge that we have about the community?
Well, well, yes, we know that because there's no one else here that will do that. So we do know that.
But we don't know that because we did an RFQ and nobody responded.
Yeah, go ahead. That is, it's a very good question, because many times, you know, it does take an RFQ or an RFP to be able to insure that. In this case, though, not anybody can provide that. So, so somebody down the street might say, yeah, I have a vacant piece of property, I'd love to just, and do this. You have to have an EPA permit to do this. So the, the, the answer really is that not just anybody can do it, you have to have a permit. Nobody south of Interstate eighty has this. So that's, that's the right answer. Thanks.
Alderman Lauer and then?
And again, I, I apologize, I probably should have asked this prior as well, but it's a good thing for the public to witness, I think. What would happen if we would pick up something that is not acceptable at, at the dump? Are we legally required at some point to accept that back? Or how, what, what plans do we have for car batteries, TV sets, tires, paint, et cetera? If they come across it, you know, it, it may have ended up in there unbeknownst to us, et cetera?
Well, a couple of things. For one, this is a benefit to even our staff that goes out and collects this from the curb because we don't have to separate out the tires. We don't have to take the tires somewhere else. We take them right to Henson Disposal. They do that for us. Anything that's hazardous, lead-acid batteries, they, they'll stack batteries on a separate pallet and dispose of them separately. We still pay for that. There, there, but, but, you know, they, the, if it's something different, but for them, what, what the benefit to us is, is we get a cheaper rate, it doesn't go to the landfill, and they have shown us a consistent average of about seventy-seven percent that actually gets recycled. And so the remainder of it that can't be recycled, that does have to go back to the landfill. You can't recycle everything. But, but again, this is, this is a, a really big win that we've been kind of waiting for personally. I've been waiting for, for a while. We like to recycle, we talk about that. This is a very big recycling increase. We don't want to lose sight of that. We talk about as a, as a county, we're under forty percent, we're about thirty-seven point seven percent. This is going to push us over that, that goal that we've been having. So it's really not, it's a little bit of money savings, but it's, it's a benefit for landfill savings and overall for the community.
Alderman Schmidt?
Just a little clarification in your, in the, in the staff memo, it talks about the kinds of things that are going to be picked up, and you note that many of them are things that are already collected at the curb by the city. And some of these, I thought we didn't collect at all, like asphalt shingles, concrete, that kind of thing. So, and I'm, I'm assuming that people don't know that, and they set them out. Are we encouraging people to?
No.
Well, I, I guess some of this is just, you know, how do you market this? But, you know, if, if you can't put out shingles, then, I mean, what is the message to people? Because I noticed, like, there's cardboard and paper products, so.
Sure. Just because they accept it.
Recycling them anyway.
Just because they'll accept it at the, you know, Henson Disposal, doesn't mean we want to encourage it at the, at the actual curb currently. That's different than our practice. They've been operating already, and so normal, town of Normal already is taking their materials. And they've, they've passed, they had a little, they had a council before us, and they've already passed this. They've already had a nice little ribbon cutting, they're accepting this material. So they're doing it now. The asphalt shingles actually have a market out there. They can be used in reclaimed asphalt and other things, but, but no, we don't want them at the curb. If they're put at the curb, we actually charge for the removal of those.
Okay, so just to walk me through this then. Somebody doesn't know that they can't put their asphalt shingles out. Our guys come along, they pick up the bulk waste, and now they are picking up the asphalt shingles, even though.
No, just to be, let's give you an example. So, so Alderman Black decides to redo his roof. His, the contractor that he hires doesn't, doesn't get a, doesn't get a dumpster, they actually put it at the curb.
Right.
Our crews come by, they'd actually send a letter to Alderman Black saying, hey, you know, you want to remove these? We don't collect them, we could do it at a cost, and we'll give you the opportunity to remove them. If you should choose not to, we'll pick it up, and we would just bill the resident for that.
Alderman, just off on that note, the city's not changing its definition of bulky waste, so just because Henson might accept something isn't change, shouldn't change what the city's practice.
But how do we then get those shingles that Henson can obviously use into their, their rotation?
They're getting there. They will get there.
Yeah, what I, what I wanted to emphasize Yeah, what I, what I wanted to emphasize is to the resident on the street, they will notice no change here from what we've been doing, we'll continue to do exactly the same thing we've done. The only difference is, once the bulky waste is in the truck, where does the truck go? When it gets into the street, it turns left instead of turning right, that's the difference.
Okay, I'm still confused, and I don't want to belabor this, so I will ask you afterwards, but it sounds to me like we might be telling people two different things. And I think this is a wonderful thing, I'm not against this at all, I think it's great, but I just want to be sure we're very clear with our citizens about what they can and can't do. Because if he can't leave his, his shingles out, then I don't see how Henson's ever going to get them, but we'll talk.
Actually, we've got two more, and if, I caution you, we're going to have to extend, we have to make a vote to extend this if we go too long, because we're just about out of time. Alderman Frue and then Milowamway.
Mine will be very short, it's a technicality, I think it's important. We had six different staff members review this, one of them has the same last name as the business, so I assume you've already vetted that. There's no relationship to anybody in the city of Bloomington that's been involved in the evaluation.
Appreciate the comment, it was specifically put in writing, addressed, no, the superintendent with the same last name as the, the actual company has no relation at all, neither holdings nor family relationship at all.
Okay, Alderman Milowamway.
In your estimation, how long is this going to extend the life of the landfill for Ballpark?
I have no idea.
Some.
Non-zero amount.
Just to be, I mean, just being honest with you, we, one of the things that it's always been a challenge with the landfill, I think we've said that up here before council in the past, is that, you know, the date that's given is just an estimate. They say June of 2017, they've been saying about four years for quite a number of years, and it's continued to just stay at that gap. So there will come a time when the landfill ends, and we have to be planning accordingly, but that, you know, that just undetermined us to when it actually will close.
And, and we are working several other initiatives, we're to take care of the solid waste when the landfill does get full, we understand that day is coming.
Okay, all right, at this point then, can we go ahead and vote on this? Do we have, do we have a motion?
I believe I made a motion.
I think you made the motion, yeah. Madam Clark, we do have a motion on the floor, correct?
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we pass this as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second?
Second by Alderman Painter. Okay, so now when we vote, it is in favor of this contract as presented. The motion carries eight to zero, no nays to announce, Madam Clark. Thank you so much. Now we move back to the consideration of a resolution supporting the Illinois Department of Transportation's application for a Tiger 2016 grant and for improvement along US 51, and I just want to, I talked to several of you about this, I just wanted to make it clear, we did have our other Tiger grant, but the state of Illinois was willing to come through and make us their own ask, the only ask, excuse me, in the entire state. And so we talked with our compatriots in one voice, and they certainly were fine with us basically just going for a Fastlane grant only and supporting this Tiger grant. So that's just as the, bit of the political backdrop in all this, and so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, and I just wanted to add on to that, that this came about all fairly recently, within about the last two weeks. We had been moving forward with Hamilton Road as being our primary project, and we had wanted to go forward with this as the, the One Voice project. But what had happened here is recently, the state came forward with a proposal that the Business 51 improvement for twenty million dollars was going to be their, their only project, and so we met in the last couple of weeks with the engineers in the town of Normal, and we understood that by us putting our emphasis behind this, we would have a much better chance of getting it. It's been much in the news for the last several days, and anyone getting a Tiger grant will be lucky to get it, but by all of us working together to put our weight behind this, we have a better chance of getting this. And this would be a great benefit for improving both traffic and pedestrian accommodations along the route. We're kind of putting these two together because this item and the next item is the same. I'm going to let Jim go through a couple of slides here, but it doesn't mean that we are, are giving up on the, the grant for Hamilton Road, and that is a second issue because we want to make sure that we get it in there as a, as a Fastlane grant. So we're going to talk about both of them here, and Jim, I'm going to ask you to go through a couple of your slides on that now.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Rasmussen. So just to highlight a couple of things out of this, this Tiger grant is, is a wonderful, quick opportunity that the city has to partner with the town of Normal, with McLean County Regional Planning, with IDOT. IDOT is the sponsor for this grant. And so with IDOT being the sponsor, this is, again, as Mayor Renner said, the only, the only state highway project that they are supporting. They are supporting a rail project in New Lenox, this is the only project in the state of Illinois. The city is going to be, we've requested a meeting with Secretary Blankenhorn, the IDOT Secretary Blankenhorn, with some of our own staff, so we can sit down with Secretary Blankenhorn and talk about, you know, what we're doing with Hamilton Road and why we, why we're shifting some of these things, so there's clarity on what Bloomington is doing. After tonight, if there is support from the council, we'll be reaching out to our elected officials, making sure they understand the support they've given and what changes Bloomington is doing and why. And we'd also just like to highlight the town of Normal, they've, they've offered additional support and help with their, even their grant specialists that they have, they've been doing some additional help, so just our thanks to City Manager Peterson, their Public Works Director Aldridge, they've done a great job with that. So let's talk just briefly about Business 51. What they're looking at is they're looking at about, you know, twenty million dollars is the initial estimate. And what that is, is, you know, we, anybody that drives between Olive and our, just on the south side of our downtown and College and Normal, you know that there are different sections, that even with the ARA funding, a long time ago, it's in 2011, it feels like longer than that, there are sections already failing. And it's failing because the, the subbase that was brick, you know, you, it's a major, it's fifteen thousand vehicles or more a day, and, and it's got brick underneath it, and so it's, it's already failing by Walgreens and the like as you head southbound and center. There needs to be widening of that, of that road, and there needs to be reconstruction of that road in some sections. And so this also accommodates multimodal impacts, and then as, as we were highlighting, you know, one of the things they're looking for is that support across the board. We also have to take as a city, there's a lot of combination sewers and older sewers that we have to take a look at if they're going to do this type of work, that we have to be able to make sure that we have the ability to look at that, because again, we don't want, as many of you remember that huge excavation we did on Empire and, and Main Street, that was a, you know, it was one of those where we really need to be looking before we do a lot of resurfacing at our underground infrastructure as well. So the other aspect of that that is good for the council to know, while the grant would cover the majority of the cost, IDOT would pick up the remainder of that partnership. Bloomington does have some cost. What we would have is the share that we have with traffic signals. Up on the screen, you can see down in our downtown on Washington and Main, the way that our traffic signals are situated, many of them are very old, we have, you know, thirty, forty-year-old traffic signals and older. I mean, many of them have exceeded their useful life and they need to be redone anyway. This is an opportunity for us to, to be able to upgrade, to be able to have the, you know, the proper radii, and also include multimodal components and look at other facets of the project. So first, we'll talk about this, and then we'll, we'll move over and just, I guess, if you'd like to jump over to the Tiger, then the Fastlane grant, we could do that?
For expedience, if you want to go ahead and talk about that.
Let's do that. So we'll jump right to the Fastlane grant.
Yeah, and what we wanted to emphasize here by putting these two together is, we did not want you to think that by voting for the Tiger grant here, that we now have given up on the Hamilton Road project, because that then is a resolution immediately following this, which then moves the Hamilton Road into the Fastlane grant, which is, which is another federal grant, it's just a different pot of money and offered at a different time. And so we will continue to apply for that, and while I can't predict the future, what we will do is continue to move forward, and this may ultimately become a Tiger grant sometime in the future, but right now, we'll go forward with, we want to go forward with both of these two things, the Tiger grant for 51 and the Fastlane grant for Hamilton Road here at the same time.
And just to clarify, with the City Manager and I and I think Alderman Frue, were you in? Yeah, we were in the DOT meeting, the Partner Transportation meeting, about this, it seemed like the Fastlane grant was much more appropriate for our particular project, more so than Tiger. Again, you know, we, we had a, our One Voice asked last year that was probably on paper much stronger as a candidate for Tiger than the Hamilton Road extension, and we got several ways, phases through, but not to final completion. So it seemed like this is our better bet anyway.
Thank you, Mayor Renner, that's exactly right. The question you should ask is, why, why are we switching? And, and this was encouraged as part of that One Voice, and so this was a logical change, our elected officials should be aware of, the legislators should be aware of our change. This has some impact with freight, and so this doesn't just, you can't separate those two. Hamilton Road does impact the rail yards and Norfolk Southern, so we're tying into that as we look at applying for this Fastlane funding. And so again, this also deals with a multimodal element that is a key facet of Fastlane, and it does talk about the ability for us to be able to have commerce and economic development across this. So, so again, we are making every effort to meet that deadline, the middle of April for Fastlane, end of April for the Tiger grant. At this point, we just entertain any questions that you have.
Questions on either Fastlane or Tiger? It's the Alderman Frue and Schmidt, Sage and Lauer.
Thank you, Jim or Steve, this sounds like a win-win for both communities, and it'd be interesting to see how this plays out with regard to a state highway and a bicycle lane as well, so hope we have some smart people working on it. Jim, you said we'd have responsibility for the new traffic signals, and in the staff reports, it indicates that an amount has not been determined. Are we going to be replacing every stoplight between Olive and College?
So, and thank you for, for saying that, because it allows me to clarify, we're not responsible for the entire traffic signal. We have an agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation that has a cost sharing, so if we have two legs of a four-legged intersection, we'd have fifty percent of the cost. But, but yes, we would be looking to, as part of this, if you look at widening or changing some of that, there is, there would, you don't want to reuse the traffic signals that are there. It is an opportunity for us to then upgrade our infrastructure, especially in the downtown.
But we ought to have some idea of what this is going to cost us, shouldn't we?
We are, we are looking forward to, you know, IDOT's still working on the cost. Whenever they submit, as soon as we have some, some better numbers, we'll send something out to the council. Again, I think the, the important facet is, this wouldn't, this, I think the, the thing you need to hear tonight, and I think this is important for you to hear, the preliminary things that we've been talking about are not in the millions for our staff, you know, for our, for our city. So we would be getting twenty million dollars worth of improvements, of very needed improvements, and we're looking at currently, you know, less than a million. And so again, it's a, it's a wonderful investment if we were, if we were successful in getting this.
I agree, it's a wonderful investment, but not to pick on the less than a million, but a less than a million's a lot of money, so. Thank you.
Okay, and then in order, Schmidt, Sage, Lauer and Black.
Yes, just a question about the downtown business district area. You note in your memo, of course, that, that you're thinking about this being more pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly throughout the whole thing. What role is the downtown strategic plan playing in this, the transportation part of it? Because that was a, that transportation part on the buckle was really a big part in calming traffic and making it more accessible.
That is correct. This 2012 Main Street feasibility study and the other, there are many different studies, and they all tie together in some way, you know, not all seamless, but they all interrelate. And so the feasibility study is just that, they take those things into account, but you have to make, you know, put where the rubber meets the road and actually start doing design on these, and that's where they have to shake out what actually will work. But the intent of the document is there, and so that is what they're using, and they've publicly stated that is kind of what they're using as their plan.
And will there be opportunities then for stakeholders, like the Downtown Bloomington Association, Bike Blow No Others, to, to actually have, to become advocates and, you know, have a voice in this?
This is an IDOT project, so with Illinois Department of Transportation, it's, I don't want to speak for them, but typically, they are required to do a context-sensitive solution process. And so I would assume this would have to follow that same process for them to seek additional input.
Okay, I'm just delighted to see they're moving in this direction.
Okay, Sage, Lauer and Black.
Thank you, a comment and a question. So a year ago, when, when the replacement of, of the Commerce Parkway addition was kind of replaced by the, the county modal transportation system over here, said, good for the county, want to be a team player, swallowed hard, voted to approve that, right? So put, it put the Commerce and Hunman project on the back burner, right? So now comes along this Tiger grant, good for the, good for the city, good for the town, be a team player, yeah, you know, I'll definitely support this. My concern is, this is the second time now that kind of the Commerce-Hunman effort has been backburnered. And so it's going to be increasingly difficult for me to continue pushing that, that much due and much-needed project to the back burner for a third time, right? And I understand, we've got some unique situation here, and, you know, we're the only, you know, project, and somebody's walking by with, with money in their hands, that's good. I mean, but I'm just saying, the Commerce-Hunman project is something that's, that's badly needed just as well for, for a number of reasons. Jim, if you could, if you could comment, and I don't, we don't have to do a real deep dive, I know anytime we talk about Main Street, there's, there's usually some concern that, that there are federal strings, state strings, you know, attached to these projects, and that, that somehow we're going to start to change, you know, traffic flows and, and, you know, business, you know, the zoning of businesses and that, that type of stuff, anything that, that has potentially created some angst for folks along the Main Street corridor before. I mean, I know the answer to this question, but could you just publicly just kind of walk us through, none of that is happening with this project, we're not changing traffic flows, we're not going to require the rezoning of businesses, anything like that that we've heard about through the years before.
Let's just specifically say form-based code, and so, you know, this is not, this, this project is not, it's a great question and it needs to be answered publicly, it is not form-based code. This is infrastructure, right away to right away, it's needed to be able to accommodate the infrastructure that we have and accommodate a multimodal component, but no, it is, it is not form-based code.
Okay, Alderman Lauer and then?
Can you break out for me, and I echo David's concerns about putting Hamilton-Bunn off, we can't afford as a community to put that off any longer. We're going to have to come up with a plan to make this happen, to further develop that area of our community, it's too important. But, but further, isn't it normally, when you have a state highway, isn't that normally the responsibility of the state? And so financially, exactly how much is IDOT doing? How much is the federal government going to do if this proposal comes through? And is the state just shoving this off on somebody else? That's what I'm, I'm mainly concerned with, because I can, I can go knock on some doors here if I need to.
Well, thank you very much, and what's good about this project is that it's normally an eighty-twenty grant, and what that means is the twenty million dollars, eighty percent of it is paid by the federal government on the Tiger grant, the other twenty percent is paid for by the state. So we do not have any financial obligation in that, except for making adjustments to traffic signals as needed, and sometimes the, the water or sewer that may be in an area that they're redeveloping. So they take care of the roads, and we have to take care of the infrastructure, though.
I understand that, but is the state actually pushing some of the responsibility financially off on the federal government here? And, and if we were to get the Tiger grant, balance for balance, for another project, say the Bunn-Hamilton, would they not still be required to fund what we're just talking about?
Well, I wouldn't want to predict what they might want to do, but they don't, but yes, they would have the requirement to do that, but they, but they don't have the money to do it, and this is a way that they can get money to do it now sooner rather than later.
Politics has odd bedfellows, there's no question.
There's one other comment I just want to make sure we say, you know, I really want to just follow back up on Alderman Frue's comment before, we don't know the cost, and one concern I have is that, you know, we say it, we threw any number out there and to be held to it, what we're going to do is we would come back to you, because there's going to be opportunities, we might have to look at sidewalks, we're going to look at water, we're going to look at sewer, we're going to look at storm, and so all of these things, what we don't want to do is have a very limited, narrow view, we want to try to capitalize on those opportunities as they arise. So we would bring those back to you, but, but I want to make sure that, you know, later down the road, it's not a, oh, wait, you said this number, we're going to have to assess that as it comes up.
Alderman Black, and then I'll ask for a motion.
Yeah, actually, that's what I was going to do is put together a motion.
Okay, a motion on the, the first one?
Well, I was going to put them together, eight D and E combined, to prove as presented.
Eight D and E, and you want to approve?
Somebody wants to vote for one and not the other.
Okay.
I would, if I could, we do not have another presentation on it. We gave both of them.
No, I know, I realize, yeah, thank you.
That's why I figured just combine it together and I'd like to make some comments.
Okay, so you're moving approval of both D and E?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Alderman-Milowamway? All right.
Yeah, I was just going to say too, if you don't mind, and thank you, Jim and Steve, for that. I remember when we, I live on Main Street, I lived on Center Street in 2010 when they were redoing it. And it was a real missed opportunity. It's really a shame to see how quickly it's fallen apart. And, you know, I was a student at the time and it was just really a good chance for the state to come through and make multimodal transportation a priority. As someone, as I talked about before, who had to ride a bike all the time for a while, there is a group of people in this community that rely on that as their primary means of transportation. And it is a disservice to them publicly if we only focus on cars. And this is a safety piece that I think hopefully that the feds will get behind, but we shall see, and I'm very excited to support it, enthusiastically support it, as you've noted in the backup materials.
Any, any other comments before we vote? Okay. The motion on the floor is to approve both D and E. The motion carries eight to zero. And then I do want to echo what, just as a, before we move on to the next thing, what Alderman-Lauer had said, I think absolutely he's right, is the Hamilton Road extension is really critical. Frankly, the probability of us getting a Tiger grant for this has got to be pretty close to nonexistent. We were going to try, but if the other project that we got did not receive a Tiger grant, the one that was the multimodal downtown, it's hard to imagine how we'll get one based on the criteria that the DOT people told us. But anyway, we do have to figure out, if this doesn't happen, or then we've got, you know, got to put some pressure on IDOT. And bless you, whoever that was. And then also, what are we going to do about the Hamilton Road extension? That's really, really critical for the area. Okay. Moving right along, on the item F, adoption of the proposed 2017 budget, and we have a very brief presentation by the, our finance director, Patty Lynn-Sullivan, city manager. And then we have ten minutes budget for council discussion. If we need more, we can do that.
Mayor and council, Patty's going to just give you some specifics, but I just want to mention that as I had an opportunity to meet with her and Carla earlier last week, one thing we did do, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at, as you look at these updated and revised spreadsheets on the budget for fiscal year 17, we thought it'd be more helpful to not only you, but the public to better understand that one reason these are balanced budget is because in several cases, we're going into our fund reserves to, to help finance some capital projects. And I think as Patty will show you, but two to kind of stick out, there's $10 million alone in appropriation or use of fund balance in motor fuel tax and water department, mainly because we're utilizing funds that have built up over time that more than likely have been planned for specific future projects, whether it be street projects, water projects. So our, our reserves kind of have two or multiple purposes. Yes, they help address our cash flow needs, paying for ongoing operating. But they also, and they also help serve as a means of additional funding in an emergency if we had some catastrophic failures or had some emergency needs. But furthermore, we do know that especially with streets and water, sometimes these projects are going to be very large in amounts and very difficult to fund in any one year. So consequently, there is an ongoing effort to also utilize these reserves in motor fuel tax and water to build up reserves so that when we do get and we're in a position to aggressively move on some big projects, if we go with pay-as-you-go philosophy, we'll have the funding there and won't have to go out and issue debt or borrow money. So I think that was a very significant addition to the budget as we're bringing that to you tonight. And I just want to turn it over to Patty to kind of give any other specifics on that and any other changes that have happened in this recommended budget since the last time we had a chance to discuss with you, I think in that Saturday Budget Work session.
Yeah, and if I could just highlight, so that's one of the reasons why that there's been some misunderstanding about the, the so-called $20 million, you know, extra in the budget. There's some things that are being spent on really needed stuff. So if you could kind of help explain that to people. Thank you, Patty Lynn.
Yeah, there's really two issues. One is, in the past, we've normally, when we've used fund balance reserves, we haven't shown it as either a current year revenue expense. So it gave the appearance of an unbalanced budget. And that exhibit has been around since before I was, my tenure here. But what we did is, we're not legally allowed to adopt an unbalanced budget. So we do adopt a balanced budget, but we're allowed to use our reserves. So for instance, the water fund, they've been saving up money for years. They're using $7 million of their savings account this year to spend on capital. The only way we can do that is to appropriate it. And so it's just the normal course of business. So.
If you could reiterate that, that in and of itself, seven, of the total amount, $7 million alone is water using their funds that they built up.
Correct.
For infrastructure needs, there's not some radical spending binge here?
And one of the other downfalls, and I'll be very brief for governmental accounting, is if we are, the general fund transfers money to other funds, we appropriate it here and we appropriate it here. Because if we don't appropriate it to send it, then we have to appropriate it to spend it. So we have almost a doubling effect, if you will, in certain circumstances. And that also causes some increases. So we're going to continue to work to refine our exhibits to be helpful. And I was very glad I was, took that public comment into account. And we would also, you know, just strongly encourage everybody to come out when they can for the detailed discussion because it's a very big, very complex budget, as you all know. But it's very hard to understand on just based on a couple of exhibits. So, and with that, unless you have any other questions for me.
You're in under budget.
I tried. I really like this new system, so I'm trying to stay under.
Questions?
So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
You might want to stay around because it will, can I have, at this point then, a motion to adopt the budget and then we'll begin discussion, further council discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderwoman-Halman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Two seconds. Second by Alderwoman-Peiner this time. Okay. Discussion. Alderman, Sage, and Black.
So I intend to, to vote yes for the budget, but, but I felt the need to just share a couple of comments because, because I wasn't so sure I was going to do that here, just within the last few days or so. And, and here's, here's primarily my concern. And that is, I, based on these conversations that we've had as a council the last couple of months or so, I'm becomingly, becoming increasingly concerned that, that we're not, we're not sincere about looking at making any reductions in our budget. And, and so I've tried to balance that idea with, with this fact that, that I do feel like, that I have that fiduciary responsibility to, to, to vote, you know, for a budget. I guess my concern going forward is, is that I know we've got some additional fee increases that I think are, you know, tax increases, fee increases that are probably going to come before us here over the next couple of months. And it's going to be increasingly hard for me to vote for those going forward because, again, we, just my perception, we seem really interested in raising taxes, but, but not so much in looking at some, at some ways to try and reduce our expenses. And so again, just want to share that, just in the interest of, of, you know, being, you know, transparent with my colleagues up here. Yeah, I'll vote for the budget, but, you know, some other fee increases that I know are coming, you know, that are going to be small business-based, it's going to be hard for me to vote for those. So Patty, thanks to you and the department heads and David and Steve for the work that you've done on the budget. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman, Black.
Thank you, and thank you, Patty Lynn. I just wanted to note that this is probably the smoothest process that I've seen, and at least in my tenure here on the council, of when we saw the initial budget, the public meeting, the discussion with ourselves and everything. So I think that's been really great. And we've done, I think, a great job of engaging with the public and some feedback here. And I appreciate, once again, making the clarification on the $7 million example. Those sorts of things really help drive the point home that facts matter when we're talking about our city's budget. And I think this is something that, you know, it's going to be covering a lot of different things, not seeing any kind of major new programming or anything like that. So I'm very excited to move forward.
Okay. All right, at this point then?
I'd like to make my statement.
Didn't see it.
I will be voting no. And it is due to the lack of reductions of many of these socialized entertainment venues that should be paid for by the folks that are actually using those services. I think it is beyond comprehension that we can continue to raise these fees and taxes and on the backs of the folks that are the working poor. And that's exactly what we're doing here. And I, I'm, I realize it is, you know, futile for me to sit here alone and do this, but at least I'm, the white flag. I'm just going to tell you, I'm, I'm going to refuse to do this until the cows come home, period. It, we have to prioritize folks. And we really haven't had, as a group, a thorough discussion to my satisfaction in several years on these. And so this is, this is my rebuttal and until, you know, I realize at some point, if we would prioritize and cut back and, and fund these in a different way, I'm not saying that we need to cut the zoo out. I'm not saying that we need to close pools or do all those drastic things. I'm saying that the folks that are using those services in general should be paying for them. And that is extenuated. And I know we're moving towards that. I, I'm very hopeful that Venue Works will hold the line and break even. I'm hoping that we can reorganize the BCPA and force it to stay within budget. And the folks that are attending those events will pay for those events. I'm hopeful that at some point, we can even get a handle on how we manage our HVAC in most of our government buildings because we're losing a lot of money in, in the manner in which it's currently being managed. And I realize that that's going to be a capital expenditure to get there. But there are many, many, many areas that we have to become more conservative about how we're handling the management of this city. And it does not have to include massive layoffs. That is not what I'm talking about here. So again, we need to look at line item by line item. And I've asked for this before. Again, I don't believe that I have been given the opportunity to look deep enough into this budget, and I'm going to ask again for it next year, line item by line item, exactly where the money is going, how much subsidization to each one of these programs that we're currently doing. So I'm going to continue to ask for that. Thank you very much.
Again, but the, the budget is even online, right? Line item by line item?
It's not deep enough, sir. I'm not going to argue with you.
Okay, no, I just.
It's a simple fact, I can't tell exactly where the money is going, period.
Okay. Well, essentially, I think if you would propose budget amendments, that would be helpful, tangible things, that would be helpful. But anyway, Alderman-Fruen.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a struggle for me, and I've spent a lot of time on this budget the last couple of weeks, but I also plan to vote no. Not easy for me to do that because I appreciate the work that Patty Lynn and Carla and David and all the departments have done. And we do have a fiduciary responsibility to pass a budget. So in a way, maybe I'm leaning on my colleagues to push the yes button. But I first joined the council in 95, and I've voted for every budget since then with my, with the exception of a four-year sabbatical. So whatever those add up to, I probably voted yes 15 times. But I think what it comes down to me is that I think the scales have tipped. And I think, not the staff, but I think the council, maybe this goes back to that prioritization, but it goes back to the council. I think as a group, we have to do better to identify expense management. And we've talked about it, we've talked about it, and I just don't see us acting on it. So perhaps mine's a symbolic vote. This is probably going to pass seven or six to two. But we can do it and we need to do it. And as was said earlier, not only the budget, but we've got a garbage increase that's going to be effective May 1. We've got another increase, and we've got others that are in the pipeline to be discussed. So we can't continue to focus on revenue, and we got to focus on expense management. So that's the reason I'm voting no for the very first time.
Okay. At this point then, I think we know what the story is. An aye is in favor, no is opposed.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion passes six to two. There are two names to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman-Lauer and Alderman-Fruen.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay. At this point, I turn to our city manager. Any, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick comments. One is, we do have in the, the audience, several officials from Connect Transit, including general manager Andrew Johnson. Yeah, two weeks from tonight, we do have Mr. Johnson coming back. And I know the whole topic of these changes going on with Connect Transit, the stops, things of that nature. This will be an opportunity to follow up and have some further discussion with, with him about these changes that down the road will only come back to the Connect Transit Board. So I, I do know we've had several council members asking about concerns with some of these. So just a reminder that he will be back in two weeks for further discussion on those changes. And then last, last week I sent you an email about the US 51 feasibility study. There is some council members who were not here when IDOT went through a very exhaustive, but I think a very citizen-engaged process to look at what should be the future plan for US 51, Main and Center Street. I just want to repeat again that we, we will go ahead and put that feasibility study as one of our kind of highlights, spotlights on our webpage. There was two maps in there that unfortunately weren't in this backup that showed some cross-sections of how bike lanes would be added to both the belt buckle as well as Main and Center going north up into Normal. So it's, I think it's important, but again, we'll put these out there on our homepage. This was just a feasibility study. And as you heard tonight, there is more design work that IDOT will have to complete as part of this entire project. But that feasibility study was the starting point. And I think the recommendations they had for multimodal transportation, complete streets and how complete streets needs to accept the fact that it's not just for vehicles, but it is also for pedestrians and bicyclists. So please, I think it's a good document for some of the newer members and the existing members go back and take a look at. But there will be additional opportunities for this council to weigh in on those plans to be developed by IDOT, you know, if they were successful in getting this Tiger grant. So with that, Mayor, I have nothing else for the council tonight.
Great, thank you very much. Just a couple of things, wanted to keep everybody understand that, maybe we keep, former Judge Chuck Woody in our prayers, he has passed away, I believe, what was it, Alderman-Peiner?
Sunday.
Sunday. And certainly he had served the community for a very long time. And I, on a little more positive note, I would like to thank my distinguished colleague, Alderwoman-Halman, for helping to translate into French. I know enough to be dangerous, but there were some, I was trying to figure out, okay, how do I explain bicameral legislature to French students? We had students from Neuville-Saison, where I actually met with the mayor last summer there, and the students came to here and they, they got to vote. And we had a simulation here and Alderwoman-Halman was able to translate some fairly complicated things. I could understand it when you said it, but I thought, oh yeah, that's what I was supposed to say. So thank you.
I made up a lot of stuff, you didn't realize.
No, I know enough to know that, what you were saying. If you said, you know, the middle, I would have remembered, you know, I get it, dude.
As a matter of fact, a road has been named Emboca Parkway back there now. And you didn't even know that, right?
Rum Emboka. All right, so we'll go from my left to right. Alderwoman-Halman and Sage and Lauer.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the, the budget discussion a little bit. I know last year, after we passed the budget, the mayor started with the budget task force. I'm not suggesting another budget task force, but I would like us to perhaps maybe next week, committee the whole, look at a process that we might be able to use to investigate expense control going forward, since there seems to be a, I won't say a concern, but an interest in how, how we do that, how we control expenses.
Absolutely. And as we go forward, again, getting the information upfront, specific tangible budget amendments would be very welcome. And I think certainly from the staff, myself, or if you have some specific suggestions, I'm happy to do that. And as I had if you have some specific suggestions, I'm happy to do that. And as I had said, I, two years ago, unfortunately, I did have to, we went back and forth a couple of times with the veto threat. I said all along, if, you know, whatever the city manager and the staff put together, I wouldn't try to pick it apart. That's one of the dangers of a line item veto. I will sign this, we do have a budget. So anyway.
I'd just tag on to that. I think one thing we also heard was that David and the department heads will be engaging in priority-based budgeting, which I think as a tool will really help us do that. That, for me, was a big part of that.
Yeah, I'd just like to see some kind of a plan going forward, how we're going to do that.
Good, thank you. Alderman-Sage and...
Yeah, I'll be brief. I know a couple, I think maybe it's been, I don't know, a month, six weeks ago or so. I know during a committee of the whole meeting, I think we talked a little bit about the BCPA, and I know I spoke rather directly about disposition of the Creativity Center as a possible, you know, cut to be looked at. I think maybe Scott mentioned some things specifically. I know we had a large contingency of, from the public that night. But beyond Scott and I, at least saying, can we continue a conversation, I don't recall any other specific alderman's, you know, comments or, you know, highlighting the need to, you know, to further look at the BCPA possibly for cuts. You know, I'd welcome the chance to have that opportunity. All I'm saying is that we had a conversation about that. I think Scott and I kind of went out on a limb a little bit. I don't recall hearing from anybody else on a need to make, as a matter of fact, I heard, you know, a number of folks, you know, kind of advocating for the BCPA, and that's good. But, you know, again, I'll reinforce the point that it's good that we continue to look at, you know, some cuts possibly in the future.
And then related to that, I don't think I'm speaking too far out of turn here, but we may very well be able to work on some booking savings with the Coliseum. We don't want to talk about that too much, though, right? Okay, all right, he's, okay, Mayor. There are some, there are some cost savings, stay tuned, that are coming, six-figure cost savings possibly.
I could probably sit here all night and talk about it, but it's a little bit late at this point. I do want to end the evening on a positive note, though, big accolades to my neighborhood, South Hill, and the Miller Park folks, who have gotten together and done some cleanup. The neighborhood's looking much better, and we're shouldering through the changes in solid waste pickup, and I'm hoping that we'll have a better summer this year than we had last. So looking forward to better things. Thanks.
Thank you, Ken, thanks. And at that point, is there a motion then to adjourn?
Some...
Several. Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt and somebody else. Alderwoman, second by Alderwoman-Hellman, all in favor signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Or adjourned, thank you. Ah, we got under two hours.